Good evening and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'm Jim Rodecki along with Alderman Gene McGowan, we're your fourth Ward Alder people. It's my pleasure to host tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Let the record reflect that the all Aldermen are present, including Mayor Burns. Just a quick reminder that after this meeting concludes, we will have a special City Council meeting immediately following this one. So, let's jump down to the second item of business, which is approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from February 12th, 2018.
So moved.
Moved by Marks. Second by Bruno. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving down to items of business. Item A, Consider Acceptance of the 2017 Key Themes Report and Engagement Summary as Prepared by Thomas P. Miller &amp; Associates.
So moved.
Moved by Marks. Second by Ruby. I believe we're going to have a brief discussion or a brief presentation by the Chairman of SPAC, Elizabeth Clements. Welcome.
Thank you. So on behalf of the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, I am submitting this report for your consideration to accept it on the public record. The report reflects the collective feedback of all the Geneva residents who participated in the public engagement work that took place in the fall. To facilitate this work, the city hired Thomas P. Miller &amp; Associates, and that's why you see their name on the report, they're the ones who drafted this report for us. So the public engagement work included a variety of activities, from small groups up to larger meetings. So we had one-on-one interviews, four focus groups, two large community meetings, a workshop with the City Council, and an online survey. Altogether, it reflects, you know, hundreds of people participated in it, and we were very happy with those participation levels. This report will now serve as a roadmap for SPAC moving forward to draft the city's next strategic plan. And we have just, we're in the early stages of now outlining key themes and objectives that is all based upon the feedback that you had before you in this report. In May, SPAC will hold a joint meeting with the City Council to go into more detail, to present our recommended framework and our suggested objectives for the next strategic plan. Following that meeting, we would like to hold another larger public meeting to give everyone an update on where we are in the strategic planning process. As I said, the participation levels from our constituents were very high in the fall, and moving forward, visibility is very important to us, and we want to continue to engage as many people as possible. So, thank you for taking the time to read the report and for considering its acceptance on the public record.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee? Alderman Bruno.
Liz, thank you for presenting, and I've, normally I don't chime in on these types of reports because they're pretty dry, but I was actually quite impressed with the format and the content. I thought it was really well done. I think it hit, I think, a lot of points that I think about frequently, so it must be right. But, yeah, I was very happy with it. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, all of SPAC is very happy with it, too.
Well, I think I speak on behalf of the entire Council, first of all, to thank all the members of SPAC. I mean, you guys put, you're the laboring oar behind this. You guys do a tremendous job. I also think that the planning process that the city uses is superior to most other communities. I think it's a tremendous tool and a reminder that that joint meeting with SPAC and the City Council will be on May 16th, on a Wednesday. Anything else? Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we had a motion and a second. And this is to accept the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B. Consideration of the Appeal of the December 19th, 2017 Decision of the Historic Preservation Commission to Deny the Replacement of Wood Siding and Trim in Its Entirety at a Significant Property Located at 113 Fulton Street, Geneva, Illinois. I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Moved by Marks. Second by Bruno. I believe we'll have a brief presentation first by Mr. Lambert.
Can I just ask a question, Mr. Chairman? There were two, actually, two things to vote on in the packet. Are they both still, you know, there was one going for the commission and one going...
Right. There's two resolutions in there, but depending upon how the Council acts would determine which resolution is actually passed.
Okay, so we will, after the discussion...
Right. Then we make a motion, and that would determine which one.
So I just wanted to make sure that there'll be another motion at that point for the vote. That's all I wanted was that.
That's correct. It depends on how it comes out. It will take, in order to overturn the findings of the commission, it will take a supermajority.
That's fine. I just wasn't sure what resolution if we're gonna do it now or later. That's all. Thank you.
You bet. Mr. Lambert.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm introducing the appeal of a Historic Preservation Commission determination for the property at 113 Fulton Street. The property is identified as significant for its historic architecture as an early Italianate residence, and its association with several prominent families associated with Geneva's past. Pioneer settlers Nelson Acres and Ellen Conant, members of the LeBaron Turner families who occupied the house for nearly 90 years, including one-time Mayor Walter D. Turner, and prominent early carpenters Clark and Long. Specifically, the appeal is of a denial of the applicant's request to remove the historic wood siding and trim from the visible street facades of a significant property and install new wood siding and trim that closely replicates the historic siding and trim. The commission's guiding principles identify that the historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved, that the removal of historic materials shall be avoided, that distinctive features that characterize a property shall be preserved, and that deteriorated historic features shall be repaired rather than replaced. The complete replacement of the historic siding without documentation supporting the need for replacement is contradictory to those guiding principles. Throughout its deliberation, the commission attempted to uniformly quantify the amount of the irreparable siding and trim. However, the various proposals did not provide consistent estimates of or agreement in the required scope of work. Similarly, the cost estimates for siding rehabilitation varied by as much as 45 percent depending on the scope of work defined in each alternate proposal. As part of its evaluation process, the commission sought an apples-for-apples comparison of the scope of work for the rehabilitation of the existing siding and trim, as well as for the replacement with new siding and trim, along with the associated costs for each of those alternates. The commission's denial was based on the following factors. The applicant's request is not consistent with the SOI standards, which is the basis of the commission's deliberations and determinations as defined by the ordinance. The applicant's request is not consistent with the City of Geneva's siding policy, which was adopted by City Council in 2010. And finally, the applicant's request is not consistent with past approvals granted for similar siding rehabilitation requests for both significant and contributing properties within the local historic district. Tonight, the applicants, Matt and Michelle Demaree, are present to discuss their appeal request of the commission's determination. Also, Scott Roy, Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, is present to share the commission's perspective on their determination. Both David DeGroot and I are present to answer additional questions that may arise regarding procedure or the specifics of the SOI standards, the Geneva siding policy, and/or the resolution of other siding rehabilitation projects within the district since the adoption of the Geneva siding policy in 2010. At this time, I would like to turn over the lecture to the applicants, Matt and Michelle Demaree, who are the owners of the home at 113 Fulton Street.
First, before you leave, is there any questions for us to... anything that's... okay. Did the other... okay.
We just have a handout that is exactly what's gonna be on the PowerPoint slides, so you can see it better if you can't see what's on the PowerPoint slide.
Hi. Is this a touchscreen? Or no? Where's the mouse?
Mouse.
Oh, thank you. There you go.
Just for the record, can someone pick up your name and address, please?
Sure. Matt and Michelle Demaree, 113 Fulton Street, Geneva. As long as we're doing that, I'll go ahead and introduce, that was the first thing on our, we're gonna put up an agenda. Don't be afraid by the fact that we have an agenda. It's gonna be very short. We saw that you got 120 pages of documents relevant to our long road we've traveled to get here today, so we have prepared a brief presentation to share with you, and we timed it, and we're gonna keep it under 15 minutes, and then let you guys drive it by asking questions or anything like that. So what we're gonna do is introductions and background. I'm gonna start with that, just introduce our family and the project background and how we got here today. And then, we're gonna talk about why we're here today, because again, that 120 pages got confusing. We kind of moved through different requests as we worked on that. I have some pictures of the house... sure. I have some pictures of the house damage that I will show as well, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Matt to just give a quick summary of our appeal, and then we wanna, we have a brief at the end, we wanna end about our experience with the HPC. So with that, I wanna talk about our, and did everybody get the, everybody got the handouts? Okay. So I wanna introduce ourselves, Matt and Michelle Demaree. Our kids are here, Ella, Clara, and Jack. They've been hearing us talk about the siding of our house for 11 months, and I thought this might be a good opportunity to learn about local government, so they're here watching with us today. We've lived in Geneva for 20 years this year. We moved here in 98. We've owned two homes in our lifespan, and two homes, both in Geneva, in the historic district. So we lived at 202 South First Street. We outgrew that home, and we moved a few blocks to 113 Fulton Street. We love living in downtown Geneva. And in introducing ourselves, that was one of the things I wanted to get across, was we really love living in a historic home. One of the things at all of the HPC meetings Michael did was go into the historic nature of our house. We really value that. We have, in both of our homes, we did renovation projects several times, so we've been in front of the HPC over 20 years numerous times. In '04, when we moved into the house we're currently talking about today, we did a large renovation project that qualified for a historic preservation tax freeze. In order to get those tax freezes, you have to prove that you did a lot of work that was important to the historic nature of your home. A lot of the work that we did at that time was actually on the interior of our home. We did a addition on the back, but a lot of what we earned for the tax-freeze credit was work that we did to the internal of our home. So we did a lot of work that was not even required by the HPC, but just work we did to preserve the nature of our home that we really respect. So that's a little bit about us. The project background, we're a little fatigued. This is our fifth meeting with the city to talk about reciting our home. So this process started in May, was probably the first meeting that we had with Michael Lambert at our house. We had four meetings with the HPC to talk about reciting the house over four different meetings. Somewhere in that process, late fall, we emailed Alderman Bruno, because I thought he was my Alderman, but I was mistaken. So Bruno hooked me up with Alderman Swanson, and we met with them to talk about the process. We were frustrated with the process we were going through, and they were kind enough to meet with us. We felt like it was gonna end up here, so we talked with them a little bit about the process and what we were struggling with, and so, and then it ended up here. We went to our last HPC meeting, it got denied, and then we're here today. So this is our fifth meeting to talk about our, our house project. So why we're here today, this is a picture of the house, but basically, obviously, we're here to appeal the decision made by the HPC, and again, Michael stated that clearly. I feel like it didn't come across clearly in the materials because there was a progression of requests throughout the process. But we're here to replace the siding from here. Doesn't look so bad. I'll show you some close-up pictures. But we're here to replace the siding and the trim on the home on the west, the front, basically this front facade that circles around to the right and the left. To explain why just the front and the left, we did a renovation that did, was in the back of the house, so much of the back and the right side of the house have new siding already on them. So our request is for the front and the left side, which are, you can see from the street. The other thing I wanted to point out is the corbels in the top part of the house, that, you know, the soffit and the corbels, we won't be replacing that. We hope, we plan to repair. But the yellow siding and the trim is what we're requesting to replace. So these are some more close-up pictures. Again, pictures don't really do it justice. You're welcome to stop by our house and look. Our kids have been embarrassed by the looks of our home and keep asking when we're gonna be able to fix it. So you can see the peeling of the paint. You can see there's a lot of, even in places that might look okay from the street, there are layers and layers. So you can see some of this was new siding from our renovation that is mixed in with old siding, but there are many layers of paint that need to come off in order to paint and have it look nice from the, from the outside. These are more close-ups, so here you can start to see the rotten wood, the peeling, the shape in the close-ups. This was last May. It actually looks much worse now because it's gone through another winter, so it looks significantly worse at this time. Again, just pictures of the peeling paint and wood. This is a close-up we tried to get, so you can see all the layers of paints even from afar, if it looks like it's a color. There's lots of problems with the paint. Rotting wood, a close-up, so you can see what that looks like. This is on the front of the house. This is hidden by the, this is protected area of the porch from the house. Again, you can see that even the areas that were protected have a lot of damage. I walked out today, and there's 23 boards on that left side that are protected. Eight of them are cracked. So there's a, and we'll talk about estimates of cracked boards, but even areas that are protected have significantly cracked boards. You know, the house is 180 years old, and we'll talk about that in a minute. One of the things I wanted to mention, this is just more...
Water damage.
Water damage. There's other repairs that need to be made that aren't included in this estimate of some roofing and things, and some gutters to fix the water problems. One of the things I wanted to mention at the end of kind of showing these pictures is that when we went through the Historic Preservation Commission, and at one of those meetings, preservation partners spoke as well, and kind of the gist was that we've been neglectful homeowners because of the state of the outside of the house. And what I would like to say is that we've owned the home for 8% of its lifespan, and it has gone through many, many years of probably not being, decades of not being properly maintained. So we could've just painted the house quickly. That's not gonna solve the problem. Everything we've done with the house, we've tried to do to a really good level. Painting the house would just, it would peel in a couple of years, as you saw, all those layers of paint. So really, it would either, it needs to be scraped. It needs to be, you know, rotten wood needs to be replaced. It needs to be really, we wanna do a good job. We really care about how the final product looks. And so, we did a major renovation on the inside of our house, we did our landscaping, and now here we are to do the outside of the house. And again, this is our fifth meeting on trying to do that outside of the house. So, those are pictures of the damage, a little bit about us and the project. Again, it's hard to get in the pictures the damage. I don't know tonight if you guys make a decision or not, but you're welcome to come look at the house and walk around. The other thing I did wanna note is, I don't have many pictures of the porch. The porch is in disarray. You can see here, the porch floors, I mean, it's dangerous, are falling apart. In our mind, as homeowners, this is part of the whole project as well. This isn't in the current bid. We're gonna have to go up in front of the Historic Committee again to repair our porch. Estimates for porch repair have been at $40,000. So that's not part of today's discussion, but as homeowners, that's part of our context is we also plan to repair the porch, which needs repair probably more than the home, but we wanted to start with the siding and then move to the porch. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, who's gonna talk about, we're already on our fourth agenda item, so we're gonna talk about the appeal and where we're coming from with the appeal.
All right. Good evening. So I'm gonna walk you through seven or eight slides, won't take more than 10 minutes, focused on the key points that we think you guys need to focus on in your decision tonight or whenever you make your decision. The first is, what was the basis for the denial? In short, as you found in your materials, the commission determined that the request did not meet the intent of the standards, and essentially that the applicant failed to substantiate the need for replacement. Those are the primary two reasons that the decision was denied. So we're gonna look a little closer at those two issues. So these are a few quotes directly from the Interior Standards website at National Park Service. I would like to read them. The first is that "The standards are to be applied to projects in a reasonable manner, taking into consideration economic and technical feasibility." Second, "Exterior alterations that match inform material and structure to the extent that they do not compromise the historical character of the structure will be considered as meeting the standards." Third, "Outside of grant and aid projects and tax incentive programs, these standards are guidelines only and not regulatory." In the words of the city's own planning preservationist, Michael Lampert, stated, as he stated in December 19th, "These standards are only guidelines and are purposely left open for interpretation to allow for reasonable accommodations." The key takeaway in our minds here is that central to the idea of intent of the standards is the idea of reasonableness. This is, this is a quote from the first page of Geneva's siding policy that I'd like to read. "If after careful examination by trained individuals, repair is considered not feasible due to extensive deterioration, cost estimates from skilled contractors in the repair and restoration of wood indicate that repair would be too costly, replace in kind with new materials that match the existing characteristics, material, etc." As you'll see in the next couple of slides, we went to great effort to bring in some trained individuals. The first individual who weighed in on the topic was Bob McDowell of McDowell Remodeling. Many of you probably know Bob. He's been in the neighborhood for 40 years. He regrets not being here this evening. He was planning to attend. He's at a strategic planning meeting at the Lazarus House. But I will read a quote from his letter dated November 29th. "We have over 40 years of experience with siding and home renovations in the Fox Valley area, and I can't in good conscience tell you that replacing partial sections of the siding would achieve the results that you are looking for. It is extremely difficult to remove partial sections or individual panels of old decayed materials and reinstall new materials to match or blend in with existing remaining materials." In the letter, which is in your materials, he estimates that approximately 30 to 50 percent of the square footage of the home would have to be removed and replaced. The second trained individual that we had weigh in with an opinion is Kevin Penzado, who happens to be here this evening and is prepared to answer questions at the end. Many of you probably know Kevin as well. He's been working in the area for many, many years. He has a great reputation. He's won several Historic Preservation Awards, including Jennifer Sullivan's old home at 525 Fulton Street, and Alderman Mike Bruno's house as well. Mr. Penzado, strong advice to the commission in September was that, you know, that was not to move forward with repair, because effectively attempting to splice in new wood amongst old wood is like a surgical procedure, very labor-intensive. You'll likely end up replacing 30 to 40 percent of the wood siding, but this could be much higher, as the risk of damaging adjacent boards is high when you're trying to splice in new siding. Second, "Combining different wood types is risky in that different wood species expand and contract at different rates and different temperatures, leading to different wearing patterns." Incidentally, both trained professionals warned us that within a couple of years, they thought that the final product could look like a patch job. He added a final point, that replacing partial pieces of siding would not be historically accurate. In the old days, boards were one piece when they could be. Cost, in addition to trained individuals, was the other key element to focus on, and we've summarized, there's been lots of bids and estimates prepared, and this is to try to keep it very succinct. In short, the cost to repair is roughly $100,000, and the cost to replace is roughly half that, $53,000. The asterisk is just the footnote that Michelle alluded to earlier, that this does not include two roofs that need repair, replacing the shutters, gutter work, and the rotting porch, which is going to add roughly $55,000 to the project's overall costs. Needless to say, not only are we fatigued with this process, but we are financially fatigued in owning our old home. Nonetheless, we love it. We wanted to highlight a few additional considerations, although technically, they're not a part of your decision process. We think they're relevant and worth something. The first is, the significant risks associated with removal of lead paint. I do not think we should downplay this. Heat gunning, you know, 20 layers of lead paint off of a home is fraught with risk, lead dust, lead vapor, et cetera. You know, the second point is precedent. We have two examples here of architecturally significant homes, 500 Fulton Street and 502 South Fourth Street, that we'd like to, you know, use as examples. By the way, 502 South Fourth Street is owned by John Rittenhouse, who many of you may or may not know, who's on the zoning board here in Geneva, and is prepared to say a few remarks at the end of the meeting. We think these are good examples because in both cases, they're obviously architecturally significant. They're large, prominent homes that sit very close to the street, and in both instances, both were permitted to do large areas of full replacement siding projects north of 60 percent plus. And so, and if you know 500 Fulton Street, it's the, it's the old greenhouse, yeah, and as well as John's house. They're both beautifully done, and I would argue that neither of them look like they haven't done a good job of maintaining the architectural details and the historical character. And so I think, you know, the point is, the job can be done if it's done right, which is our intent. Third is the risk of final product looking like a patch job. Obviously, our two trained professionals made a similar statement, but I wanted to point out that there were numerous contractors who came to look at the project and walked away, and were not interested in bidding it. Simply looked at it and said, "No, thank you."
Or, "Are you insane? You don't want to do this."
Due to the risk of, I think, the work. Fourth is the ability to add Tyvek and insulation. Clearly, if we can pull off the old siding, we will have an opportunity to properly insulate the cavities and add Tyvek. You know, we estimate saving tens of thousands of dollars over the next decade or two. Last is the higher maintenance costs expected with, you know, the old wood relative to, you know, being able to replace it with, with new cedar. That's it, almost. One more slide after this. You know, obviously, in summary, we think, you know, repairing the existing wood siding and trim, given its age and condition, would be a poor investment, pose considerable risks, and is unreasonable expectation for any homeowner. I have one final slide, just as an aside. We don't have to talk about this, but I just wanted, we just really wanted to plant the seed with this committee, and that is to share briefly our experience with the process and what we think are opportunities for improvement here. We would say that, first of all, having been citizens for 20 years of the community, we greatly value the HPC and fully appreciate and understand that they are volunteers and they put in a lot of time. So this isn't meant to be negative, it's meant to be constructive. Second, if it's not obvious, this has been a very frustrating and fatiguing process, and we think wasteful on a lot of people's time and resources. And so that leads us to want to improve, to help improve the process. We think that, you know, just to plant the seed, that maybe there's a way that this committee can have influence to form some sort of an ad hoc committee to work more closely with citizens of the community to figure out ways to improve this process, leveraging technology, better communication. We just launched a Facebook page for homeowners, residents in the district. We have 130 members. Could be a great avenue or a great mechanism for communicating, to centralize a voice, to memorialize, you know, learnings. I think, you know, we have a lot of ideas on how the process could be improved. So we'll leave it at that, and you guys can decide if that's something worthwhile or not. So, before we open it up for questions, I wasn't sure what the protocol is. Would you, would you like to invite John to speak now or later?
What's the pleasure that maybe you have?
Anything? Sure.
Okay.
Be great.
John Rittenhouse, 502 South Fourth Street. Good evening. I think this is, just sitting here, listening to Matt and Michelle, I mean, it's like my wife and I's very parallel situation. We moved here in 98. We bought our house on Fourth Street in 2004. We did a major renovation that first year. In 2008, we did a second renovation on the oldest part, the most historic part, the front part of the house. We went in front of the HPC, and, I mean, with flying colors, we've recited our whole house with new cedar wood. So, we didn't go in front of the City Council, we didn't have to go in front of anybody else. So I think the precedent was set in 2008. I know that in 2010, there was a policy set in place. I don't think it, I don't think it affects what Matt and Michelle are trying to do here. But basically, if you drive by my house, my house is brand-new cedar wrapped around the whole house. So... So again, I think that if the HPC, for whatever reason, they're denying Matt, Michelle, they certainly did not deny my wife and I. So I'm not sure what changed there, but same things Matt and Michelle talked about. We had a young family. Especially, or the lead was the biggest issue for us. It was literally double to side or to paint the house than it was to side it. So I think those points, the HPC voted in favor. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any questions from the committee at this point? Would Chairman Roy like to speak now?
If you have some questions, we'll go on writing votes.
We'll proceed right here. Go ahead. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a little confused. The, I believe that we were voting strictly on siding, but you mentioned millwork. You do plan on removing all the millwork around the windows?
Yeah. So siding, it should say siding and trim to replace, yeah, on the very, on the second page. I'll go back. So this is taken, unless I made a mistake, this is taken directly from your materials, which is the request, replace wood siding and trim on the south and west elevations with new siding and trim to match the details and dimensions of the removed wood and trim. So the intent is to replace any of the trim that is rotten, to the extent there is trim, i.e. under the porch, that is solid, we will leave that. You know, anyplace we don't have to replace something that's in good shape and will look good, we intend to leave, so.
And you have, you have some internal gutters. Is that right? That there was some damage from gutter?
Yeah, on the left. So I referenced two roofs. One is the, on the left there, above the porch, and then you can't see, there's another roof on the west elevation, which is above a bay window. Both of those have internal gutters, and both need to be completely ripped off and replaced.
So where those gutters cause some damage to the exterior shell, had you addressed those in any way during your time there? You've been there for thirteen years?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't touched the outside of the house effectively on the south elevation.
Well, we've, we've painted and repaired the porch several times,
Right.
but we haven't, we haven't done gutter work.
And just a point of clarification, you referenced 500 Fulton. I've lived next to that house for twenty-four years. That was not sided. When, when I moved in, they had a contractor heat stripping the entire house, so that is, that is original siding for most of
You'll have to speak to the owner because we, from the owner, we receive different information.
I did speak to the owner.
Okay.
They did, they did replace a lot of siding, abutting the addition and on the non-streetside facades, but the streetside
Right, but the, in that house, the non-street side facades are huge. I mean, the very front is very tiny.
Right, but Fulton Street side is substantial.
Right, but, yeah, the Fulton, so I guess it depends on what you're calling the front street side. I would call the front fifth.
Well, but, street side is Fulton and
And fifth. So they didn't replace any siding, you don't think, on Fulton?
The, what they replaced on Fulton was a small area, abutting the addition, I think some under the dining room windows, and there was a dormer up top. The bulk of the original house is
Yeah, for, for what it's worth, we spoke to Marty, too, and he told us he replaced that entire Fulton Street side and that he was very supportive of our, of our effort here tonight.
He's not here, so I feel like we shouldn't talk about it.
Well, I'm quite familiar with Marty. I was just at a birthday party.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just interesting, we got different information, so I don't know what to say about that.
That's it for now. Thanks.
When you talked to HPC, did you get an indication that the price difference between repair and replace, number one, wasn't enough to satisfy getting you into replacement? And then, number two, and I look forward to asking Mike about this, at what point is a high price difference considered not reasonable?
That was our question for them.
I mean, we might, we, I'm sure we have some precedent, you know? Fifty percent more, forty percent more becomes unreasonable somewhere in there. But you didn't
We asked that question. I don't feel like, I don't, you'll have to ask Michael or someone from the, we've asked that question a lot, is how much of the wood would need, needs to be replaced? Is it considered too much? You know, and, and that, we didn't get a clear answer on. They thought maybe if it was over fifty percent was one of the last things. And then I asked quite a few times about what's reasonable as to cost, and they don't, they didn't have a number that they gave us as a indicator.
Evidently, I mean, from what I'm seeing in the material, if you have a potential cost of fifty-three grand to replace, but if you can repair for ninety-seven, that's not enough. You need to spend more than twice as much, and maybe that'll get you into the realm of reasonable.
So I, I think really that's up to this committee. I mean, if you put yourself in our shoes, if you were asked to repair wood siding at twice the cost with the expectation from the experts that you were going to end up with an inferior result, would you make that investment? I would not.
No. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question. So you've been in the house thirteen years. You showed some pictures of its current condition. Can you tell me what it was like when you moved in? What was the exterior condition like thirteen years ago?
I'll talk a little bit about that. So, you know, you buy an old home, and you don't know quite what you're going to get. So we started on the interior of the home, and we ran into lots of problems. So we basically redid all of the electrical in the whole home. We did all of the plumbing in the whole home. We, there was just problem after problem.
Windows.
We did all of the windows. A lot of them were in non-working order, so that was one of the things that earned us the historic preservation tax credit, is we had every single window stripped. Kevin Penzado did that. We had every single window stripped, re-strong, and they're all now in working order. So we started just putting money into the house, putting money into the house, and working on it piece by piece by piece. What I would say is, the home has gone, undergone a lot of patch jobs. So I didn't know what I was getting myself into when we bought the home. It kind of looked okay. From the street, probably the paint job looked okay. The porch looked okay. But what we found out is, it has never really been properly scraped and painted. So over, you know, people, I could have slapped paint on, and from the street, you would think it looks okay.
So my question, I'm not questioning
Yeah.
your decision, how you wanted
Right.
to allocate your limited
Yeah.
resources in your priority order. When you bought the house, you had a home inspection.
Oh, yeah.
Did the home inspection tell you that your siding was rotting and that you had a problem?
No, there was a fresh coat of paint on it.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, thanks.
And I would also say, the porch was fairly new, but, which is going to be another issue with the HPC, is we want to get some composite material on the porch, so we're not replace it, because we have fixed the porch several times since we moved in. And also, we've learned things like all of the corbels, or not corbels, all of the balusters that were put in were cut and put in and not primed on the bottom. So now we have three hundred corbels or balusters that have rotted. So, I mean, I just think there's a lot of maintenance, but no, when we moved in, they didn't say the siding was in bad shape.
Before I recognize Alderman Bruno again, anyone else like to speak for the first time? Alderman Swanson.
In reviewing the packet, there was a lot of back and forth with the HPC with synthetic material.
Yes.
And it, can I assume now that you have backed away from any synthetic, and now we're, we're looking at a wood-for-wood
Yes, yes. We, we, when we first went to the historic committee, we asked for synthetic material, and we compromised on that after, and actually, it was Alderman Bruno, who, in having a conversation with him about how it can look different, we decided that was not the best route to go, and so we have now decided wood-for-wood.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno.
Mr. Chair, I thought quite a bit about this, as you might imagine. Just in the, in the way of some, some background, some baseline as to some of my thinking on this, not particular to your, to your property. I look at the value of historic materials, and I've used the analogy before. We have, if you go to the, if you take the chance to go to the National Archives in Washington, DC, you can see the original Declaration of Independence. Looks terrible. It's unreadable. It's behind bulletproof glass and argon gas, but there's a reason why we keep it. There is some innate value in that. Some more baseline stuff. Historic materials, this is, what, a hundred and fifty-five years old?
Hundred and eighty, yeah.
Hundred and eighty. Cedar that you put up will never conceivably last that long. Any new growth material just doesn't have the durability, the insect resistance. Old growth lumber that was felled by local forests have growth rings so tight, parasites can't even dig into it. They just physically can't fit in there. That's driven home, too, by replacement windows. I'm glad that you had Kevin redo your windows because histor, you know, statistically, replacement windows, regardless of what the commercials on TV say, will be replaced in sixteen years. If you've got a hundred and eighty-year-old windows, you're not going to get that kind of performance. So there's, there's innate value in, in old materials. The appearance of historic materials, we'll get into, this comes around to cost, as to what this is going to cost the homeowner, but you did talk about cement board. That's, that's off the table, but you're right, that while it can be durable, it does look different. To the point of alligator paint, that's, that's interesting, and I think everyone can have their subjective feeling on something like this. Some just think it looks bad. To me, once you've stabilized it, that just tells me, well, this house has seen the Civil War and the Louisiana Purchase and World Wars and pandemics and polio vaccines and the moon landing. That imbues, that's part of being historic, is not just the visuals, but it's been present during these times. So that's all just baseline stuff that feeds into my, into my thinking. One thing that I keep coming back to on this is lack of maintenance on the exterior. Homeownership fairly demands that the priority items are roofs and the exterior shell. I'm not going to put in a hundred thousand dollar kitchen under a leaky roof. You know, in thirteen years without maintenance, you know, it was probably in significantly better shape, paint or no, when you got there. Now, I bring that up because in my tenure on HPC, we've dealt fairly frequently with either inadvertent or intentional deferred maintenance, sometimes even much more pernicious. I'm not making any judgments on motives here. What I do worry about here, though, on a significant house, is thirteen years of conscious, consciously not doing maintenance on the exterior and then rewarding any property owner for neglect by permitting that, permitting replacement, when it could have been saved earlier, it's a dangerous precedent. I mean, we deal with it enough already. That feeds into my thinking. Now, on your, your proposal to replace all the siding was denied. It was on December nineteenth, I believe, was that? Immediately following that, HPC did vote on a compromise motion that would allow replacement on the non-streetside facades and repair on the front. I know you didn't ask for that, but that spontaneously came out of HPC.
No.
No, that was not, we weren't, while we were, while we were present, they voted in?
Yeah, it was, it was immediately following that, that first, that first motion.
I thought it was repair on everything. I didn't, that wasn't made clear to us. We thought it was repair on everything.
Okay, yeah, the
I think they, I think they said on the west side that they were okay even the ArtiBank.
Oh, that was, yes. Again, we went through a long process. So I think at, like, meeting two, they said that, but at the final meeting and the final vote, that was not what was stated to us, at the final meeting and the final vote.
I just went through the minutes, and
Final meeting.
that final vote, first one was denied. Immediately after that was
Repair.
a vote for repair the front, replace the rest.
I don't remember, but I think we would have said we weren't interested.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I think we, I think
And that's, that's valid.
Okay.
I just, you know, the, I just wanted to clear that a, you know, a compromise was offered. To the point of lead, you know, I've got an old house. I think lead is sometimes a red herring. If you're going to remove the siding, you're going to deal with lead. If you're going to repair the siding, you're going to deal with lead. It's not completely avoiding the lead issue.
I, all three, all, two of my kids at the time, when we renovated, had high lead scores. I took them to the doctor, and they had high lead scores. So that is not something that we're willing to compromise on, so
I'm not saying you should.
And I think replacement of siding is a much shorter contained process versus an entire summer of taking off paint is going to be a much lengthier process. And just from a personal perspective, our last renovation, my kids had high lead scores. It was devastating, and I won't do it again.
I understand. To, to one other point which you alluded to in the, with, with the HPC, there were, yeah, we'll, we'll skip that. That's it for now.
Thank you. Alderman Marks.
Could you, just to clarify, could you go back to your slide on, on the bids, please? Just so I can get a clarification. So the top ones are total trim repair, so that is actually, is repairing everything. Now, you've got three different bids for, for siding and trim replacement. Are those all cedar, or are some of those the composite material?
All cedar.
That's all, so there's that big of a difference? Those are, all three are all cedar bids?
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, just your clarification.
Alderman Kilburg. Your bids again, are those, are those estimates, or are
No, those are actual bids.
A firm bid? In other words, there's no float to those possibly?
Not other than number two. That number two is, has Bob McDowell's numbers as part of it, and he didn't want to give a firm price.
Okay. I guess I had a question, then. Also, if you'd put up the slide of the siding again, could you explain to me how you go about replacing that siding? I mean, essentially, do you cut it at the, do you, do you pry the siding I mean, essentially, do you cut it at the, do you pry the siding up and then you have to slip, slip the replacement in? Or are you, essentially, are you cutting it? Please step up to the microphone and introduce yourself. Are you cutting it out and then are you bucking the new, the new cedar strip in?
Basically, what you have to do, and I did that.
Sir, could you introduce yourself so we have it on the record who you are, who's speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kevin Penzado and I used to own Penzado Remodeling and Restoration, which I restored Mike Bruno's house and the one next to him and 525 Fulton, where I was, I was there for a year and a half. So, basically how you do this is you have to pry it up, cut each nail, and then the lap siding, you have to pry that up, which is miserable. It's surgical.
Right.
And then you have to try to cut or pull nails. So, if you pull the nails through the wood, then you've got to patch that hole. Okay? So, it, it, it's-
But don't you anticipate you're going to have damage though, when you're trying to pry that up?
You're, you're, probably 20 to 30%, you're breaking.
Yeah.
And that's just being real.
And then, from my experience with restoration, and I restored a home a long time ago.
Mm-hmm.
But the thing is, is if you go in and start to try to replace that siding, you have curvature in the existing siding that-
Cupping, if you will.
Cupping, and that you're going to have to caulk it, don't you think?
Well-
Caulk pretty extensively to-
And, oh, hold on, no, I hate caulk.
Right, okay.
You know, caulk is a bad word for me. The thing is that you have the old versus the new.
Right.
And obviously, it's always like a 30-second smaller.
Yeah.
Okay? So, then you're trying to splice in, and so then, what do you do? Do you leave it look like crap or do you grind that original siding down and try to smooth that out, which is never okay?
Yeah.
Because you still have the cupping on the left side and you have this nice, straight, clear, vertical grain cedar on the right.
Yeah.
It never works. Mike, can I ask you a question? Why did you replace 100% of your siding?
Because in the 70s, it was sandblasted and nails were falling out and the siding was falling off.
That's the only reason.
So, it looked terrible.
No, and, and mind you, thank you for letting me do that. Me and Cuba, remember?
I remember Cuba.
Yes. And, and, and I do want to make one more point. Everybody knows 525 Fulton. Okay? I spent a year and a half of my life there, 100% interior, 100% exterior. She was pregnant. She refused to move. I said, "Get the hell out of this house. Go. You don't want to be here." We grinded down every piece of siding. Kyle, her son, was hugely, hugely had lead in him. And she blamed me and I told her to leave. This is not a, it's, it's, it's not a joke. And, you know, as far as Matt's house, oh my God. I mean, I built the, the beautiful walnut staircase, redid all that. He, he put in that addition and stuff like that. I mean, this guy is about preservation to the, to the, to the 100%. And he can't, you know, put in siding, you know, with a bunch of splices all over the front, when, you know, it's like, that's not the way it was done. So, let's get back to the way it was done and make it right. He's using the same material, except, I agree with you, it's not southern yellow pine, right? But, oh my God. You know, you're going to have seams and it's not going to match up and it's going to crack and he's going to have to paint it every two years? I'm sorry, I was just getting angry back there, just, I was just getting angry. He wants to put the money in to make this house right and this is my fourth meeting I've been to. It's, I'm, I'm flabbergasted. Now, can I ask you a question about your railing?
Sir, 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 sir.
Yes, sir.
Let's, we'll, we'll ask the questions, okay, for now.
Oh, please, I'm sorry, I'm just on the roll.
Yeah, I know, just give us one minute, okay?
Yes, sir.
I guess you get to ask the question next, Mr. Bruno.
Please do.
The, just one I forgot to ask before, so in that, we're, we're, well, I've replaced siding and you cut the first course of nails, take one clavert out, it's fairly easy to take out successive courses. You're going to get damage on those, on those first courses, but I've, I've replaced a number of siding, even on my vertical grain expensive Gucci siding that I put in.
That's right.
It doesn't hold up, it doesn't hold up as well as the old growth. But, in that compromise that was voted on, would replacing the side of the house offer, it seems like it would offer enough raw materials to patch into the front, so you could take vintage siding on, from the west and use it to repair the south. Certainly, there's, you know, you, you patch holes, you know, epoxy fillers, but-
You know, I'm going to step in here right now and it was just reminded to me, that is not what's in front of the council right now, a compromise deal. What, what is before us is what is before us, so, you know, it's probably not the time or the place to hash out the discussion about whether or not it's a compromise.
Sure, thanks.
Thanks, Councilor, you can withdraw the question. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Let me speak.
Thank you. Any other comments for these people before I open it up for more comments? Alderman Maladra?
So, what I'm going to be interested in hearing is the other side of the story, because from where I'm sitting, we're looking at a request to replace wood siding with wood siding. The fact that he can't get old growth pine is not his fault. He's built, he's going to do the work in the 21st century and whatever wood is available is whatever wood's available. That's not his problem. He's not putting vinyl on it. He's, he's going to basically do to the outside of this house what the people did when they built the house. He's going to side it with cedar. How that's a violation of preservation principles, I need to understand. It's not old cedar, but it's the only cedar that's available in 2018. It doesn't have alligatoring, but I don't necessarily view alligatoring as a sign of character, particularly because you can only see it when you're standing on his property looking at it. From the street, it wouldn't be noticeable. He's doing everything he can to keep this house an example of the character that we're trying to preserve. When we had a debate about windows several years ago, the debate was that they were looking to replace old windows with material that was nothing like what the old windows were built with. The idea being that, oh, but if they were using wood, it would have been okay. So, in this case, he's using the material that we would ask somebody to use. The question about knitting stuff in, Mike, you talked about the difference between the new wood and the old, so I don't understand how it can be knit in with the old and still come out looking like there's not a difference, given that you've already said there are obvious differences. It's a fairly significant percentage of the house that needs to be replaced. I'm not concerned about the dollars, although I, you know, it's not my money, I can, I can say that easily. But I am concerned about the, the percentage of the surface area that's going to have to be taken care of here. And so, doing a patchwork quilt on a huge percentage of the surface area seems to be a risky proposition that costs twice as much. So, it's, it's not the cost by itself, it's the cost combined with the risk that the final result doesn't get what any of us are looking for, which is a home that exhibits the character of Geneva's downtown. From my perspective, it seems almost the best route to get that result is to re-side the house. Now, I have to admit, I had an old house in Wheaton. It was not part of a historic district, but when we were looking at what to do with the siding, we had the pres, what I call the preservationists come out and try to dissuade us from putting siding on the house. The alternative was, was basically paint every other year and we just weren't up to that. We did the worst thing you could do from a preservation perspective, we put vinyl siding on the house. I've been here 20 years, I've been by that house a few times since and it still looks pretty nice. So, I don't, I don't, I don't see yet, and, and the HPC hasn't really explained it yet, so maybe I will, but I don't see how replacing wood siding with wood siding in our historic district violates any principle whatsoever. And so, I'll need some help with that. Thanks.
Thank you. And if there are-
Quick response to-
First, let's hear from Alderman Ruby, we've not heard from-
The north and east sides of the home already have new cedar siding?
Correct.
Okay.
We would match that.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
As far as patching, I've been told by our attorney that I can't discuss the option where they wouldn't have to patch in odd material.
But you just did, thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions from the committee, I think we'll open it up and I think we'd like to hear from HPC Commissioner Roy, please, or Mr. Lambert, or a combination of spokes. You can address Mr. Maladra's burning questions. Now, we know why he moved from Wheaton.
Good morning, my name is Scott, or good, good evening, my name is Scott Roy and I'm the current chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission and I get to respond to what you've already heard tonight, so, and all the documentation that you've read over the weekend, probably. Like, like you've heard already, the commission met with the demaurays on four separate occasions, primarily because it was difficult to get really a clear scope of work and a cost differential idea of replacing with the cement siding or cedar siding or repairing what needed to be done. And that's what a lot of our time was spent doing is, so what, so what does this number mean and what does that number mean and where did you get this number and where did you get that number? And so, that's primarily what a lot of our discussion was about and it just seemed like we couldn't get a good apples-to-apples comparison. So, you can see a number that maybe it costs twice as much to do the repair, but we're not really sure that that's really what the differential is. So, so we had four meetings and the first meeting, as was kind of stated tonight, the demaurays are strong historic preservationists, they loaned two historic houses in the district, they invested $600,000 in the interior of the house, and after more than a decade of postponing all the exterior work, they came to the commission seeking approval to propose and replace the historic wood siding with cement siding, hardy plank is, is what it was called. As Michael told you prior ordinance, we've got three different levels. We've got, first thing that we would really like you to do is to repair what you, what's damaged. So, however you can do that, repair what needs to be done. If you can't repair, then we ask you to replace with a like material, so wood-for-wood, that type of thing. And, and then as a last resort, we'd like you to look at some other, maybe a cement siding or something like that. So, we really want you to do the first two first and, and then if there's no other way to do that, then let's look at the cement siding. And in all of our meetings, it seemed like we did not have a good idea of what, what the repair needed to be done and what replacement could be done. It all just went straight to, straight to this cement siding. So, that was primarily what was going on during that first meeting, was trying to understand, so why are you replacing this and what is the cost difference? In the second meeting, Michelle Demauray came to the commission by herself. She presented cost to repair and replace with wood. However, it wasn't really, like I said, it wasn't really an apples-to-apples comparison and so, we asked a lot of questions about that. And Michelle stated at that time that she was not really interested in doing the, any type of wood replacement at all. It was kind of cement siding or none and I don't know why I'm wasting all my time trying to gather these costs up, just so that, so then if I come up with this cost and then are you going to make me do this or can I do the cement siding that I wanted to do to begin with? So, so that was kind of what happened in the second meeting. The third meeting, Matt Demauray was there by himself. We talked to him a lot about going through these costs and what, and what they were trying to accomplish. And at this point, this was in October of 17, we kind of came up with, you know, is there a way we can compromise with this, because it doesn't look like we're getting anywhere? So, our charge as a commission is primarily from what you can see from the street. And so, many times we have looked at, okay, from the street view, we want you to preserve, repair, replace as little as you can, and then the non-street faces, kind of do what you need to do. So, we kind of offered that up in the third meeting and it seemed like they were kind of responsive to that, that that was something they would be open to. And, but they needed to do some more research too. So, they went back, said we would meet in a month and so, we got together in December and it was both of them together with us again. We kind of talked through this and we were having trouble with, again, defining what the scope of the wood replacement and what, what was the scope of, what could be repaired. A lot of these estimates that we were running into, the contractors did not look at, they were guessing of the percentage of repair that needed to be done and we thought that you needed a little bit more investigation to determine, because a lot of those are saying 30 to 50% replacement, some of them went up to 60% of replacement and so, we pushed them, so how, how do you get between 30 and 60%? How do you understand? You've got this number here, but what if it's only 30% that you have to repair and not 60%? And so, we were trying to push to get them to really get an understanding of what, how, what percentage needed to be repaired and what needed to be replaced. So, that was kind of what happened in that, in that third meeting. And then the fourth meeting, they really kind of pushed that they wanted us to make a decision, yea or nay, on what they wanted to do. And so, we, we took that, made a motion to replace the wood with wood and we denied that request. So, as an alternative, we put another request that we would really like them to repair as much as they could on the south and part of the east and west facade and come up with a number like that. And then they could do wood or cement siding or whatever they needed on the other facades. And so, we approved that, the commission approved that alternative and I think Mr. Bruno was talking about that. So, we, so anyway, so that, that's kind of the way the process went. We hadn't, didn't really come up with meeting of the minds and so, that's why we're here tonight. So, I guess just in conclusion, 113 Fulton is a significant property and we think that it needs to be preserved as best as possible and that retaining historic materials is really important for, especially for this building. As I mentioned a lot, is that the commission was really trying to get to an apples-to-apples comparison and what is the extent of this damage that needs to be repaired? And we really did not get a good idea of what that meant. And so, Alderman Cummings, you were asking, you know, it doesn't have to be double or two times or, you know, whatever it needs to be. Really, we just want to see what, what is that difference and, and I don't think in these four meetings, we ever determined what the difference really is. So, and then, again, we came up with a compromise, we thought that was fair. It would have cut the costs down on both proposals and, and we thought it was a fair compromise and they were not interested in that and so, that's kind of why we're here tonight, to talk about that. So, any questions for me?
I, I have one question, I guess, and it, maybe it's, it might be for Mr. Lambert, but perhaps you-
Sure.
-to Mr. Roy. The, the city's siding policy that was adopted, I believe around 2010, was that-
2010, yes.
I mean, that, that's no more restrictive, no more, I mean, it's, it's kind of a guideline to help interpret the standards from the-
It's more of a clarification- It's more of a clarification, it, it, it's not stricter, but it is just a, a deeper clarification on-
Right. If it was to be stricter, it'd probably have to be ordinance rather than just a policy.
Sure, right.
So it's just, it's a kind of a primer to help understand what, what we're gonna- Um, other question, I had this, this idea that, um, have, has the applicant, and again, maybe this is for the city, were they ever cited for the condition of the property, or did the city ever go out? I know we have a building inspector that looks at these things, and was the applicant ever asked to repair this prior in the last thirteen years that they've owned the home?
Good evening. I, I did check with our code enforcement division this afternoon, and it is on the list of properties to be cited this spring, so-
But we, but we have not.
We have not in the past, but it is on the, the list for this year.
So, so we never asked them to do anything with it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, okay. Thanks. Alderman Malodra?
So Scott, you, you explained the process, you explained, you know, almost like a play-by-play.
Right.
But then you said, you know, they asked to replace the whole thing with wood, and you denied that, but I don't really understand why. That historic siding is important, especially on this house. Why? Why is old wood that much different than new wood?
Well, I mean, I think Alder, Alderman Bruno kind of talked a little bit about this, is that you were trying to maintain the characteristics of the property as it was-
Correct.
... in a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy years ago.
So if, if the new wood is that much different, proposing to put a lot of new wood on with a lot of old wood really results in this sort of mismatch. So a better solution would be a bunch of, or all new wood, because it would all look the same. I wouldn't stand on the street going, that's not old wood.
Right.
Um, so again, I, I'm not, I'm not certain I understand why this, this adherent, if we were trying to stop cement board, although I'm not even sure about that, what's, Mount Vernon's made out of, it's not wood, right, but it looks like wood. But anyways, if it was something different, then I'd be, you know, totally with you guys on this one, but it's the same as the people who built it in, in eighteen whatever-
Yeah.
-used, and so what I'm-
But it's just not that, it's not as old as-
I, right, I understand that. I'd rather have a nineteen thirty Martin guitar, but I can't get one, you know?
And so you're gonna buy one that's-
I got two, that's okay.
-two years old?
Yeah.
And that's okay.
So, so why did the commission say no to like-for-like? Especially when it's, it's okay per the Department of Interior, it's okay, but per our own policy? What was the driving-
After you've looked at the repair portion, and that's, that's kind of what we came down to, is that there was not a good quantification of how much damage is there really?
So you had two ranges between, between thirty and sixty percent?
But there wasn't a cost difference, it was, oh, this is, it could be thirty to sixty percent, and it's probably gonna cost this much.
Well, I'm not, again, if it's sixty percent, you're trying to put this new stuff on that looks different than the old stuff, you, you got a problem.
And we've kind of been told-
If it's thirty percent, maybe not so much, but-
I guess the way that I would say it is, um, I'm not a contractor, I don't do this myself, and so-
Right.
-you know, I'm not the expert in doing that, and we got one person's opinion on, on how that would work.
Yeah, I don't think we want to hear that one.
We didn't get, um, we didn't get multiple perspectives on this, and then we've kind of been told not to talk about taking other siding from the other part of the property, and using it to replace the damage in the front.
Even though that's the third time we've said that.
I know, but that's, but, but there are, I guess what I'm saying is there's other alternatives, not just patching and splicing and doing that, there's another way to do it.
Yeah, and so, and so I-
I don't know.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, um, so I, I want to protect the integrity of the historic district, I want to protect the integrity of the, of the preservation, the historic district, the preservation code, the preservation commission, the whole bit. What I'm trying to figure out is how that integrity is protected by saying no to the same material that was used in the beginning, just because that material's not a hundred years old. I can't go out and buy a whole house worth of hundred-year-old cedar. So I don't get how a cedar house is a, uh, inconsistent with a cedar house.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, there's three levels, the re, the first goal is to repair.
I, I understand that, yeah.
If you, if it's not feasible to repair, then let's replace. So what, what does that cost?
So repair in this context is, what, just keep painting it every other year in perpetuity, or-
No, because things are rotting, and things need to be replaced.
Cut out the rotted wood and splice in the new wood, which we heard the challenges with that.
Right.
Um, again-
So, so again, we did not get a good comparison between what does it, what is it gonna cost to repair versus replace?
Well, what did they show? They showed a bunch of quotes where there was-
They showed a bunch of quotes, and that, that is fine, and, and that's great for this forum, is to be able to show, oh, it was a hundred thousand, now it's fif, this is fifty, and this is a hundred, and so-
Right.
You guys are smart, you should know that you'd rather spend fifty than a hundred.
I'm not, that's-
And so, you know, so that's understandable, but what our commission was doing is, so let's go through this fifty thousand versus a hundred thousand, and, and what are you really saying here? And, um, a majority of that had to do with, well, that's assuming that there's sixty percent replacement, and we said, so how do you know it's sixty percent? Well, they looked at it, and they just kind of eyed it and said, looks like sixty percent to me, so here's what the number is. And what we said is, we'd really like you to have someone look at it and determine or confirm that it's sixty percent and not thirty percent.
So they got McDowell, and they got-
McDowell didn't, they didn't come up with a, they came up with an estimate of the percentage, they didn't determine the percentage. They said, it looks like-
Can, can we be agreed that nobody will really know the percentage until they actually start doing the work?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's move forward a little bit before the house is another year older, that we've, this, we've kind of gone over this a little bit more. Alderman Bruno, go ahead. You did, a long time ago, I guess. Alderman Cummings?
Need your microphone.
Uh, yeah, you brought up the splo, oh, no, I did respond to you, but I can't, I can't, I can't actually respond to you, but, uh, as long as I have the floor, uh, two, uh, when you're looking at replacing siding, and again, you know, I've, I've had to replace some new siding, um, if you look at the elevation, uh, you'll notice a lot of very short pieces. So there's, uh, and there's that under the eaves. Uh, in terms of the long courses, you don't necessarily have that many where you would have to splice into it. You know, you have pieces this big between windows, under the eaves is probably in fairly good shape, because it's protected from weather. Um, that's it.
Alderman Cummings? Microphone, please.
You had mentioned, someone mentioned, over a decade of no repairs or upkeep on the exterior of the house. I thought we had a paint job one time in the last thirteen years? Is that true, or is that not true?
It was freshly painted when they bought it.
Okay, so one, so, okay. Um, so there is a paint schedule HPC would like to see people in the historic district have, perhaps?
I, I don't, I don't think you can do that, I think it's individual to the house, and, and how was it prepped the first time it was painted, and how, you know, there's a lot of involved, and instead of just slapping on paint, there's-
Yeah.
-repairing rotten wood as you're getting ready to paint, and there's other, other things that can be done to, so you don't have to repaint it every two years, it, it, that's not necessarily the case.
So then, evidently it falls back to the city, and when something does fall into what we call disrepair, cross over a certain line into disrepair-
Mm-hmm.
-then we issue an ordinance violation and cite that person to fix it. So we weren't at that point yet, we were getting there. My house is getting there, my, the grass in my front yard is getting there. A few more weeks, warm weather, if I don't cut my grass. I understand the question to get tighter bid estimates to find out what the cost differential was. If someone had said that to me, "Mr. Cummings, go out and get better bid estimates from these guys, we know it can't be perfect, get better bid estimates, we need to find out what the cost differential is," is, I wouldn't have said-
At our meeting?
Why do you want to know the cost differential? And the answer is, because at some point, it becomes unreasonable. And my question, of course, would be, at what point is it unreasonable? And I know we're not gonna answer that right now, but we need, if we like transparency and objectivity to the citizens of Geneva in this situation, we need to be able to say, you know, it's somewhere, maybe it's loose, maybe it's forty to seventy percent, we need to be able to provide an objective answer, I think, to that, to that question. And circling back, well, I won't even, uh, thank you.
Thank you. I, I guess I have one more question.
Sure.
Is, is it the desire of the commission to repair or restore things? What's, what's your, so I think there's a difference.
So what is the difference?
Well, if we're asking them to, if, if your goal is to have them restore this piece of property, then I think Mr. Malodra's point is very valid, that the only way to do that is to put wood on it. If we're asking them to make a repair to it, the question then is, if, if you want to repair it, to what time period in the hundred and eighty years do you want to repair it to? To look as though it, is, is it, you know, is the alligator wood okay from oil-based paint that, you know, gets sucked into the wood and dries up? Is it, you know, it gets a little bit nebulous as to, if we're asking them to make a repair, to what degree are we? But if we're asking, if, if restoration truly is the goal of the commission, then, you know, I, I think he has, he has a much more valid argument to say, I have to replace the wood if you want me to restore this.
Right.
I think that's a crux of the, of the deal here, so-
I would say the Secretary of Interior Standards and our siding policy says, try to repair first, if you can't repair it, if it's, if it's just, uh, unreasonable to do that-
I'd rather-
-then replace it-
Yeah.
-with like, with the same material, and then as a last resort, you can use a, a separate, a different material that is similar.
Wouldn't the goal be to restore the place? I mean, that, that's what, wouldn't that be what preservationists want as restoration?
Goal is to repair it.
To a, to a, its original, repair it to appear the original, it's like, it's a person with a, with a car, car restorers want it to look like it was the day that it rolled off the, the line. Is that the goal here, or is, you know, that's, I, I don't know if my point's clear, or-
I know, it's really tough, because, you know, you've got some car fanatics that will take replacement part, not, not in, you know, not the original equipment, they will take new equipment, and some people will say, that's okay, I am fi, I'm fine with that, but there's other people that say, no, I want that carburetor that's twenty-five, thirty years old.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Alderman McGowan hasn't spoke yet.
Um, I just want to start by saying, I, I truly appreciate the work that the Historic Preservation Commission does. Um, after reading through all of the material, um, regarding this, this home, and hearing all the information and the conversation that's transpired here, I'm leaning towards, um, going against the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, and allowing the homeowner to replace with new wood siding, and I just want to, um, give my reasons. This house, which is, um, over, well over a hundred years old, has already gone, undergone several extensive renovations, some of those were in the eighteen hundreds, but still, that, that stands. The house has changed extensively over time. Um, I'm gonna try to read my notes here, okay, so replacement of, okay, so in my, in my, um, unexpert reasoning, replacement of the old siding and trim with new wood, new cedar, it's more of a fixed cost, you could get more of an, more of an exact estimate for the, the cost of those repairs. Um, I mean, sorry, not repairs, the cost of that work, whereas, um, a repair estimate is, is a big unknown, because even if, um, a company comes out and says, okay, to the homeowner, these are, these are the boards, these are the areas we anticipate having to be repaired, again, it's been explained that in, in removing any damaged piece of wood, like a piece of siding or trim, you run the risk of damaging any adjacent boards, that's a total unknown. Um, it could be that boards are damaged every time they pull out a piece. So, um, that will certainly cause the repair cost to go up. Um, and by only repairing, by only replacing the damaged boards and pieces of trim now, um, over time, the other original pieces, you run the risk, I mean, it's possible that, um, every few years, as was mentioned earlier, those pieces will have to be repaired or replaced as well, so that's an ongoing cost. Um, and by allowing the homeowner to just replace with new wood, um, they, they probably won't have any more repairs again for a long time, and that's the point. So, um, okay, just bear with me here, because I was writing notes, and I'm trying to go back through all of them, through all of them. In addition, when, you know, in, in an old home like this, allowing the homeowner to pull off all of the new siding, it's also possible that other, um, repair needs are gonna become apparent. You know, when they, when they, when they strip it down, they're gonna say, oh, there's a little bit of rot in here, or other issues, like bees or other things. So those are going to add to the cost of repairs to the homeowner, because of course they're gonna need to repair anything that's like damaged behind what you see. So, um, that's another cost. Um, now, the homeowner mentioned that allowing for full replacement of the, of the siding and trim will allow them to, and install modern insulation, which will obviously make the home more energy efficient, and therefore be better for the environment, and obviously reduce their energy costs. Um, so that to me is another reason to allow the homeowner to, um, go ahead and just replace with all new wood. And, um, regarding the lead abatement process, I think that, yes, there's gonna be some, um, you know, lead chips and lead dust, regardless of whether the siding is repaired at this point, or fully replaced, but certainly, in my mind, when the contractor comes in and can just strip down all of the wood and, um, trim, they can do a better job of that lead, um, just containing the lead, instead of, you know, if there's sanding, if there's, you know, a lot of different work involved, I can see there, there being more lead pieces and chips and dust. Um, and, and then again, um, if, if only some boards and pieces of trim with lead paint are removed and replaced now, going forward, anytime more repairs are made, there's, there's gonna be another incidence of lead being stirred up, and that's a, that's a hazard. Now I want to point out, point out, I guess from a sociological perspective, that this is a large home, it was designed for a family, it was designed for children to be living in this home, so, um, I mean, case in point, if you look at the history, they even say that the families who, um, lived in this home, from going back to the eighteen hundreds, they were involved in establishing a school and a library, these things are like institutions for people with, um, families with children. So I think that that's a very valid point, that we should just, um, allow the homeowner to, um, eliminate the, the lead risk by, and, and so, in my opinion, um, that's another benefit to allowing the homeowner, in this case, to- that's another benefit to allowing the homeowner, in this case, to, um, fully remove the, the siding and trim. That will really get out a, a large, large portion of the lead that's existing, currently existing on the exterior. The lead paint that's currently existing on the exterior of this home. Okay, so, the, the current, finally, oh, two more things. The current homeowners have proven themselves to be good stewards of this historic home, and also their previous historic home. So, um, I don't think that replacing the, allowing them to replace the wood siding and trim with new wood siding and trim will really, um, detract, would really detract from the historic significance of this house enough to deny them the ability to, to do that, that major, work, okay? I think the home will still look wonderful. They're not asking to demolish the home. They're not asking to tear down a section of it. They're not asking to put on a big, new, modern addition on the front. I think the home will look, um, as, as good and as historically significant from the street now as, wait, I'm not making sense. I think it will still look great and historically significant if we allow them to replace, fully replace the, the wood and trim. And I do agree that it, it will look kind of haphazard if we have like, the historic boards that are sort of like aged and a little bit like warped over time, with like brand-new ones that are crisp and clean and a straight, you know, plane. And we don't know where those, those boards are going to be. It's going to be like a mishmash of, of the, um, I'm not using the correct term, but more like the warped boards with the, the straight, the new ones. So, for many, all of these reasons, and several more that are, that have been stated tonight, that is why I'm leaning towards, um, allowing for the homeowner to, like granting them the ability to replace all the wood, um, trim and siding with new wood. And also, I agree with the fact that the word's reasonable, and both reasonable and cost prohibitive, those are, those are subjective terms, so it's difficult. But that's why, I mean, there's an appeal process. So I think it's fair to, um, for the members of this council to interpret those words the way that they see fit, because we don't really have any other, like, scientific method of interpreting and implying those, those words. We just have to use our best judgment, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ruby?
Did the HPC ever define the, is there a, a certain percentage of the home that needs to be repaired? That needs to be replaced before you will allow them? I know you, you look at cost, and then you, you brought up that the percentage of the, the boards that needed to be replaced was, was never really clearly defined. That seemed like a big part of the reason that you denied.
Yeah, and so I wouldn't say that, as our commission, I don't think we determine that if it's thirty percent, or sixty percent, or ninety percent. I, I think we ask the applicant to come to us with a case and says, "Okay, this is what the guidelines state. This is what you want us to do, and that's going to involve this amount of work and this amount of cost. And this is what we would like to do, and that's how much this work is." I don't think, I mean, again, I don't think you can set up certain percentages where if it costs fifty percent more, or whatever.
Sure. I, I'm just curious if, um, you never got a clear answer to that, because the, there wasn't a clear, concise question.
And that's really, that's really, I think that's our strongest argument, is we really did not have a good apples-to-apples comparison between the two alternatives.
Sure.
And, um...
Well, and just for sake of conversation, how, how does replacing their siding compare to if they were to do an addition? You know, they're allowed, they, they have put an addition on the home. They're allowed to put, to extend their home, which obviously would entail new siding. So, it, it seems odd to me that they can't put new siding on the rest of the home.
We've had a number of additions within the historic district where they've taken historic buildings and put additions on. And one of our, um, other guidelines or charges is to differentiate between, this is the eighteen eighty house, and this is the two thousand and eighteen addition to the house. And, um, there's different ways to interpret that. You could make, you can do a contemporary, contemporary-type addition, or you can make it look similar to, um, similar to the older house. But, um, what we ask is that you differentiate, you show us a differentiation so that anyone could look at that and say, "Well, I can see this is the old house, or the original house, and this is the addition." And there's different methods to, to do with that, and, and siding is one thing where you could, we have, we have some houses in the district that have the initial, or the original wood siding on the original house, and they have hardy plank in the addition, or new cedar in the addition, so...
Okay, and I'm also curious, um, and if this is relevant, if you can share anything about the Rittenhouse example, that he was able to put new siding on his home, what's different about this case, or what has changed? Has, has, has something changed, or is it just different circumstances?
I did not look at the old minutes to when he did his work, so I am not sure what, what the circumstances were.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm sure, I'm sure those old minutes that would explain that.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from the deess at this time? Alderman Burkhardt?
Thank you for your service, and obviously, all the members of HPC have spent a lot of time on this, along with the homeowners, and I think it's, we're obviously all getting a, understanding of that tonight. Um, my questions are actually for Michael Lambert. Is that okay?
Sure.
Hi, Michael, thanks. If this house were to be, uh, if the new cedar siding were to be put on, would, would it lose its, the significant, would it be, no longer be deemed significant in terms of the historic district? Is it possible, or?
It, it could be downgraded to a contributing building. Again, significance is based on both historic events and people, and architecture. So, um, from an architectural standpoint, it would probably lose its significance. However, the people and the events that are associated with the building would probably be strong enough to retain a significant rating for the, for the, the house. That, that's the short answer. I could give a lecture on that, that topic.
We'll save that for another, another night. Um, how many siding cases does the HPC consider each year?
I don't have it broken down by year, but, uh, since I've been here since two thousand and thirteen, we reviewed eight cases. This would be the second significant building, um, that, uh, has come before the commission. The others have all been contributing buildings.
So only about, you said eight cases in about five years?
Yes.
Do you deal with windows more, a lot more often, window issues?
You know what, I didn't break down the, the cases, but we deal with windows, we deal with siding, we deal with additions, we deal with repair. I'm, I, I could break that down if you really want to know, but I would, I would say that windows and siding are probably about the same. I think we've probably had about eight to a dozen cases with windows since I've been here.
Is siding going to, I mean, siding, is it just going to continue to, I wonder if this is something that's, as these older houses get even older, and the, as people are investing in additions, and we're, we're going to continue to have these kind of cases come up, right? HPC will, I mean...
Well, you, you will have cases come up. I think, uh, the, the concern that I have from a staff perspective is that, um, we, we are a certified local government, which says that we're going to uphold the certain standards that are set by the, by the state to have that program, which is our big benefit of, of, in Geneva, that we can offer the tax exception freeze. So, um, I, I do an annual report every year to the state, and they ask about cases, and what, why things are, were approved, why they weren't approved, if things get overturned, why'd they get overturned? So, uh, my, my concern is, is that, um, my predecessor, Carla Colfus, worked with the commission and the council, and created this siding policy, obviously because there was a concern that we were losing historic material in the district. So that, that has been in place. Uh, that is something that has been embraced, uh, as part of our certified local government review, that we, we uphold that siding policy, and we follow that. So if there, you know, if, if we're going to set that aside, it may lead to, you know, a ripple effect in other issues. Anybody could come in and say, "Well, we have an old house with lead, um, and that's our excuse now for removing siding." Preach, you're not going to have historic materials in your historic district. You're going to have new-looking buildings with new material, and it's no longer going to be a historic district. It's going to be buildings that have old framework, but new material on the exterior. And that's, um, you know, that is a philosophical question that gets talked about in preservation all day long.
So that's a great lead to my next question. If, if they were to do this in a very quality way with, um, you know, new cedar siding, but the same width and everything that's up there now, will, would I be able to tell the difference from the street? You would be able to, I bet, but do you think, that, it's a big difference between what they're talking about now and the cement siding that seemed to maybe muddy, muddy the waters earlier in the discussion.
Correct. Um, to the average person, the answer is probably no. Nobody will notice that. The, the question gets to be, again, it's, it's looking at that broader picture. If that turns into a snowball effect, then do you start noticing that your historic district no longer looks historic? Like I said, it's, it's, it's something that's debated in preservation circles, day in, day out, about how far you go, how, how many, what, what do you do, what do you allow for siding replacement? Do you only allow it on non-street facades? Do you limit it to the types of materials, or do you have to prove that twenty-five percent or thirty percent is your threshold? Every community deals with it differently. We don't have that in our siding policy, so it's based on exactly what's been presented tonight, that a case needs to be made, that the material is beyond rehabilitation.
So it's good to know. We're not the only ones wrestling with this, obviously. It's, yeah. Could you talk about the one that you said, the other significant building that was, that a siding issue has been brought up in the last five years?
Sure, that was two twelve South Fifth Street, um, which some people know as the Merritt King House. That was a major renovation, um, and all of that siding was repaired. They, uh, they actually pieced in new material, I think, if you go by that. It's very, very hard to discern what is the new material and what is the old material. That, that's an example of actually, you know, threading it in, weaving it in, and having a very successful rehabilitation project there.
Did that homeowner want to replace originally, or?
Pardon?
Did that homeowner want to replace all that siding, or?
No, I believe the, the option from day one was to repair and restore.
And then the house that we were talking about, Rittenhouse, house which I know is before your time and before our siding policy, is that the, uh, Mr. Rittenhouse had said they were able to, got approval to tear off the old siding and replace. That was two thousand and eight, sounds like before the siding policy.
Correct. Um, I, I tried to go back and look at those minutes. They're a little bit vague as to what the discussion was, so I really don't feel comfortable commenting on what was said back then.
Sure.
I, it, the record's not real clear.
Okay, I understand. Thanks. Thank you.
To Alderman Burkhardt's last point, though, again, the siding policy was never meant to put more teeth into what, it was simply a, a, a method to explain and to illustrate what the Department of Interior was requesting.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from the deess before I open it up to the floor? Alderman McGowan?
Mr. Lambert, so, you just mentioned, um, regarding the Merritt King House, that they did have repair work done to the siding, but that right now, even if you look closely at it, you can't tell which, which boards are new and which are old. So, other than seeing it on paper, oh, this, this address has old siding, what, what difference does it make? What, like, why is it so important, in your opinion, to keep pieces of old siding? If you can't even, if it's, if it's really hard, you just said it's hard to tell which, which boards are new and which boards are old.
I'll synthesize what my colleague from Little, Little Rock, Arkansas, just recently posted. That, um, the, uh, the idea is we are a preservation commission. We are preserving what the historic generations have touched, have molded, have made. We're preserving history. We're, we're not a beautification committee. We're not an architectural review committee. We're a preservation commission. So our job is to understand what is historic in the, in the historic district, and preserve that which is truly historic and authentic to Geneva. Not, not to create a, a new place that looks somewhat like what people were familiar with a hundred years ago, or fifty years ago, but the actual place that they actually walked, touched, lived, and breathed in. So, that, that is the big difference. It's authenticity, rather than just appearance. We can go to a lot of places in the country that are reconstructions, or are, um, places that are made to look old, but they're not truly old. So when you lose those authentic materials, or that authentic workmanship, um, you have lost something in your community, whether it's tangible or intangible, um, you know, communities have to wrestle with that. But that's, that's what you're losing, is, is the authenticity.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, and to, to put a finer point, and basically to point back to my original analogy, the value of having that original thing is why it's valuable to have the original Declaration of Independence for viewing, as opposed to a copy that we don't have to protect. You know, that's, that's what historic is. It's, it's, it's not visual. It's, it's the, it's, in this case, it's the materials that existed during that period. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, and I appreciate your analogy, Alderman Bruno, but just for, wanted to point out, there's a huge difference between the original copy of the Declaration of Independence and some wood, wood siding on a house. So, and, and if the siding were, so, and I love history, and I'm a huge supporter of historic preservation, and I hope I don't sound like I'm totally contradicting myself by saying that, but it just seems to me that in this case, um, the reasons to allow the homeowner, um, the ability to, to just get some new, new siding, but it's going to look exactly the same, are just too, too compelling for me to, to deny their request. And I could see how, if they were going to use a different kind of siding, like if they were going to go with, like, an aluminum, or even if they were, say it was one of those, um, now, I don't know my, my terminology here, but is it called shaker? Shaker roofs are where it's little, like, pieces of cedar, about that big, and they're overlapped? Like, a totally different style of siding, put it that way. All, you know, if, if it was a home in New England that had a certain special kind of cedar siding, and they were going to go with a different shape, you know, I could say, "Yeah, that will, that's definitely going to take away from the historic significance and the appearance of this house. It's going to be, that would be a drastic change." But if, if this, um, they're using the same material, albeit newer, um, and it's going to look almost, you know, you, you want people to tell the difference. I think that it's still in keeping with the spirit of historic preservation in this case. It's not perfect, but, um, all things considered, I just think it's, it's a better option. And I also want to mention, and this is silly, but, you know, trees don't even last forever. So if you'd expect a, a piece of wood siding to last forever, this is a home that people are living in. They're trying to raise, they're raising a family. They're trying to use it. I think that it's some, um, some, I guess, variances should be allowed in this case, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cummings?
Thank you. Um, I, I wanted to mention, I am cognizant of that. First, thank you very much for all the work that, that everyone has put into this. I'm cognizant of the fact that HPC is, uh, a preservation committee that is preserving more than just aesthetics, that it is preserving, uh, materials. I'm very cognizant of that. An easy, uh, example for somebody that I would agree with you on would be someone that came in and said, "I have a fifty thousand dollar job, or it's fifty-three thousand to repair." I'd say, "You know what, you're, you're," or, "Sixty thousand repair and fifty thousand to replace." I'd say, "You know what, let's, let's go with, uh, the repair, the more expensive option, because it's incrementally, uh, small." But at some point, and evidently that I was presented with that point, that's where I draw my line. Uh, I think it makes more sense, but I am very cognizant of the, uh, task you've been tasked with. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Swanson?
I just wanted to point out that in the first presentation we had tonight, the focus groups both concluded that historic preservation was one of the top four items and assets of our city. And one rated it second out of twenty, and the second group rated it fourth out of about thirty. So it's very important. So it's very important. And I think this is important with this decision tonight, because we're talking about a significant property. And I was curious how many significant properties there are in the historic district. And it can be an approximation. Are there 50? Are there 100?
I would say it's about 10%. There's 756 properties, I believe, in the historic district. I believe about 75 of them are ranking as significant buildings.
So we would be talking about a policy that could impact 75 homes. So, thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
I agree that preservation's important. As I said earlier, I'm trying to figure out if this change threatens the integrity of the district, the integrity of the commission, the integrity of the whole thing. I actually think that for our district and our Historic Preservation Commission to maintain its integrity, we have to allow things to change within the district. If we get too rigid, then we start to become sort of like victims of our own inflexibility. We don't recognize certain realities. The district becomes more challenging than perhaps the benefit we derive from it. This request actually fits within our own policies, assuming two things. The first assumption is that the repair is not feasible. We've heard from two contractors who say that it isn't, that there's anywhere between 30 and 60% of the wood needs to be replaced. That is a broad range, I understand, but both of them have the statement in there saying, "I would not advise repair." You're not an architect, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer. I don't like it when we up here get into the weeds and try and tell the experts what to do. I don't like it when we tell the water treatment experts that we don't need an ultraviolet light to kill nasty bacteria or whatever. And so I don't like it when we tell the contractors their business. As far as I know, the homeowners have consulted with experts, and experts have said repair is not feasible. So that fits. The second assumption is that the condition, which is irreparable, is not the result of negligence. A lot has been made over the decade where the homeowner hasn't paid attention to the I think that that's, so how do I put this? We've seen cases of demolition by neglect. I'm thinking of two in particular. I'm not going to mention specifically, because I believe those homeowners disagreed that it was demolition by neglect. The same thing we have to watch here, but I understand situations where you have limited financial resources and you prioritize the work that you're going to do. I didn't realize that, you know, common homeownership dictates that you take care of the outside before you take care of the inside. As long as the outside is holding up, I might take care of the place where I spend 99% of my time, which is the inside. So I don't necessarily believe this is the result of negligence on the part of the homeowners. As they mentioned, they've owned the property for 8% of its life. My question earlier about the condition of the house when they bought it, I'm afraid you didn't have a great home inspector, because if the wood really is rotten, that would have been fairly easy to see. But I'm not surprised that they slapped a new coat of paint on top of it so that they could skate by. It's an old house. I'll bet you the paint was peeling, and it was hidden for a while while they were looking at the house, and now they're dealing with the result of that. So, to my mind, this is a request that fits within the boundaries that we've laid that allow for change within the district without threatening the integrity of the district. It's a like-for-like replacement of material. I actually have to question if I was the guy who originally built the house, and I had to face this situation, what would I do? And I think he'd go out and he'd find new cedar siding, and he'd, you know, at that time, it would be new in 1800 or whenever the thing was built. But he'd put that up and, you know, go on his merry way. I also think that a lot of this perhaps would have played out differently if there was not so much discussion at the outset of alternate materials. I kind of think that if it was a situation where it was like, hey, we're facing, we have to replace between 30 and 60% of this stuff, and we're proposing to do it with wood, like-for-like replacement as opposed to cement board, I think it might have been easier to see how this fits within our defined framework. So like Jeannie, so far at least, I think I'm going to vote to overturn this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to the matter that hasn't already spoken? Going once? Going twice? Going, Ms. Sefanda?
Liz Sefanda, 1013 Dunston Road. I have a couple of questions first for Michael. Can you tell me how much of the clabbered was replaced on the, I have to call it the King House? You know how those houses have names for their previous owner? Michael, can you give us like a rough percentage of how much was replaced on that house?
I hate to venture a guess, because I wasn't there every day.
Oh, okay.
But it was a minor portion. It was not a major portion of the siding.
Okay. And then the second question for you, Michael, is, do you think of, and kind of along the lines that you were talking about, do you see 50% here as kind of a tipping point, so that if you retained more than 50% of the old material, that you're retaining the historic sense or fabric or whatever you would call it of the structure?
He didn't expect to be grilled, did he?
Professionally, I hate to put percentages on.
I said roughly.
I know, but I hate to put percentages in general on things. I think you have to go case by case. And I think that's what the commission was striving for, was trying to get an understanding of what the percentage was on this house, not a guesstimate. And I think that's really what part of the struggle was about. And I think that's what everybody's really, on the commission, is uncomfortable with, is that it's still an unknown. Is it 20%, 30%, 50%, 60%, 80%? That question hasn't been answered, and I think there are ways that are done in the profession of preservation to be able to get close to those estimates. And the commission was asking for that and didn't get that. So that's, I, so I can't, I can't answer, there's a particular threshold percentage. I think it's evaluating each individual property and understanding what that property is about.
Thank you. Do we really want to continue to do this? Alderman Maladra?
Thank you, Michael. You said there are ways in the preservation business to get at that exact percentage. Have you defined those ways to the homeowner? And have they declined to do that? If it's that simple, if it's that direct?
The commission did ask to have those percentages quantified, not just.
Right, I get that. But did they specify how it can be done? Because they were, they consulted expert Penzano, they conducted, they consulted expert McDowell, which to me is pretty good expertise. What's missing from that estimate, then? And I'm only saying this because you said there are ways to get at something more specific. I would like to know exactly what that is, if indeed there are those ways.
So, can I jump in here for a second? Because that's a great question for HPC at the time of its deliberations. Probably not appropriate right now for Mr. Lambert with respect to what's pending right here. Unquestionably a relevant question, but that's for the deliberative process at the recommending board level. Whether that record was adequately induced or not is a different subject. As for purposes of this appeal, you're sitting in review per the code that Geneva has enacted, whether, and I agree with the Alderman that was talking about whether there could be some clarification in the code that makes it more objective. That's for policyholders to determine. But for purposes of right now, whether HPC made their decision and induced as they did, it is as it is. But whether you see after careful examination, if you think a reasonable case has been made to overturn or to uphold it, is what's before us today.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to go on at length here, but I basically don't agree with Ms. McGowan and Mr. Maladra, but I just feel like Ms. McGowan's comments were so thoughtful and so respectful of the entire process, and I am delighted to see a couple of new, well, that's the one I've heard the most, council members giving this thought, this whole topic such serious consideration. And finally, I do want to say that I felt, having gone to three or four of those commission meetings, I felt like the commission was really pulling teeth at the beginning to get the information they needed to make a fair decision and a final decision. That's what it kind of came down to at the end. So on behalf of that commission, I mean, they were struggling with this, and those meetings were long, I guess like this meeting was long, too. But anyway, welcome to the new council members. I think this is the first time I've been here with some new members, and it's delightful, and I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sefanda. Anybody else? Mr. Kautz?
Good evening. Jim Kautz, 1305 South Batavia Avenue, Geneva, Illinois. Yes, I guess what I'm seeing, what I'm listening to here is a way to basically get around the process of asking for repair work at all. If damage goes long enough, and if enough of a surface area needs to be remedied, then the longer you wait, you can make a better case to say, "Well, I just need to replace it all in kind, and then I don't have to go through the tedious process of repairing it." And if I come in with a kind of a mindset that says, "Well, I know what I want to get, and I want to just replace all of this material because I don't want to repair any of it," that kind of, we might as well just take away the one part of the Secretary of Interior standard that says, you know, "Your first approach is to try to repair, then replace." So it, I'm just kind of seeing a template here, call it precedent, where somebody else could come up and think, "If I wait long enough, if enough of this siding goes bad, then I'll just, instead of messing with the tediousness, which it is a tedious process to repair it, I can just get it all replaced, and it'll be a lot easier deal." Then that undermines the idea of what the Preservation Commission is trying to do, and that is this idea of preserve, you know, and to make sure that you can hold on to those original materials as long as you can. And yes, this stuff isn't, it has a lifespan. It has, it does expire at some point in time, and it needs to be removed. But I think their charge is to do everything they can to try to encourage an applicant to do that first step before you get into the second or third step. It seems like this is a pretty easy way to eliminate those first two if you have enough of a job that says, "We just have to pull it all out, and we're not going to deal with piecing in pieces of clabbered." It's also something that, you know, if you're going to bring an application here, you're not going to have a contractor that's going to be contrary to what you intend to achieve tonight. So a contractor that's going to be here that doesn't think that the appropriate approach is to repair because it's too tedious and hard, I would not have a contractor sitting here saying, "Oh, yeah, we can do that. It'll be no problem. We can work through that. It'll be good." You know, that doesn't help your case when you're trying to make the case that we want to avoid repair work, we want to replace it all. I helped a business owner some years back who had the same issue. He needed to paint and repair clabbered siding on a 1860s building. The repair work was done, I'm going to guess 15% of the clabbered siding was removed and replaced with newer cedar, cleaned up, scraped, and the paint withstood another 15 years. It faded, but it didn't check or go bad, and the repair work held sound. So it can be done. Otherwise, we would just eliminate that whole thing from the Secretary of Interior standards. We'd just say, "Forget it," because if the case is made that we can't repair anything, they would remove it. So it just seems like we're making a case here so they, to say that if you wait long enough, you can just ask for a complete replacement and forget the repair start and repair part. And I think that is a little bit undermining, so that was my comment.
Thank you. I'm starting to mine, yeah. Let's, I think we've had enough input at this point. Thank you.
May I invite you up before the last speaker? I just wanted to point something out.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Rodecky. The Secretary of Interior standards for repair does not specify the building material, and so that's what makes this so subjective to me. And I'm certainly not, I don't have any intention of letting whatever is decided tonight be the standard by which all other appeals are decided upon or whatever, but I'm just focused on this address, 113 Fulton Street. So, but getting back to what I was saying, the Secretary of Interior doesn't specify whether the repair, the material, the building material to be repaired is stone or brick or wood. So I'm going to state the obvious. Wood is plant-based by nature. It's designed to deteriorate. Yes, you can do many things to preserve wood, wood siding over the years, but I think, you know, a point is, will eventually be reached where, due to the wood siding being outside and being exposed to extreme temperatures, extreme hot heat, humidity, cold, freezing, ice, snow, rain, whatever, that certainly takes its toll. So this is another gray area for me, because I think that wood should be somehow considered differently. I think, I wish the Secretary of Interior standards would sort of have a little information on wood. To me, wood, wood is something that if it's in a home, it needs constant attention, constant repair, constant, kind of like babying to keep it, to keep it sound as an exterior building material. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we've had enough discussion on the matter. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this one.
On the original motion as presented?
We need a motion either to affirm or overrule. And we can have both if you want, but that motion is pretty benign for purposes of addressing the issue.
Well, it's, as the motion was stated and voted on, though, it says, "Consider the appeal," so we would be voting on their appeal.
Right, but you have to either uphold the appeal or reverse. So the consideration of the appeal requires a determination of either up or down vote.
Who would like to make?
I'll make the motion to overturn the HPC ruling.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Now.
Excuse me, to clarify, then, since we're making a motion to overrule, a vote of aye would be in favor of the homeowner's request?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll remind the committee that it is a simple majority at the committee as a whole to move this up to the city council level, which will occur immediately if it's successful to go through, if we get the requisite votes. Okay, so we're clear that an aye vote is in support of the applicant and their appeal? You're supporting them. Everybody's clear?
Say it one more time, please.
An aye vote.
That's how the resolution is.
An aye vote will support the applicant and will overturn the HPC recommendation. And all we need is a simple majority at this point to do that.
Move it to the second.
That's correct. An nay vote means that you would side with the HPC recommendation.
And as a point of clarification, irrespective of the turn, of the vote count, it will be voted on at the council level, because it's been noticed for a hearing. So irrespective of whether it's upheld or overruled, we'll have a city council meeting.
Thank you. Please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Chair Burkhardt?
I want to say this is one of the harder votes I've taken on the council, and I'm surprised to say that about a siding case, but nay.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Nay.
Motion carried?
Motion carries, seven to three. Moving on to new business, do we have any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a brief announcement. Give me, but I received the text update that the Vikings won their super sectional tonight by 12 points, and they'll be heading to state, so.
Thank you.
The Lady Vikings, excuse me.
Lady Vikings.
And, Mr. Chairman, by all means, enjoy the seat, no need, because I can barely feel myself anyways over here, so it's all good.
Okay. Okay, well, a motion to dismiss it be in order? Moved by McGowan, seconded by Marks, all in favor, say aye.
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 Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order, please, and let the record show that we have a full house this evening, verified by the recording secretary. We have one matter of business tonight, and that is to consider the appeal and the overruling of the Historic Preservation Commission as related to discussion earlier this evening at the committee of the whole meeting. The vote was seven in favor of overriding the Historic Preservation Commission's decision with three votes against. I'll entertain a motion to put the motion to overrule on the floor. Moved. Motion by Marks.
Before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to waive our fee for this meeting. Do that beforehand.
Depends how long it goes, I guess. I'll consider that right afterward, how's that? Since we already have a motion, is there a second on the floor?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. The matter's on the floor. Anyone have any new information they'd like to present this evening that has not yet been discussed, addressed, or presented at the committee of the whole meeting? Any clarification required? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Michael or David, does this decision make vulnerable other properties in the district?
Oh, we caution the director from answering this question too specifically, since the ultimate decision rests with his body, not with staff, so.
Correct. I think the discussion tonight has raised some questions about how we look at significant properties and our siding policy in relation to those properties. As Michael pointed out, we have at least 75 properties that would fall in that category. So whether it's being more specific on what's required for a bid proposal for an apples-to-apples comparison, as I think that was part of the struggle the HPC dealt with, was some estimates were for repair and replacement, some were for prepping it for painting but not replacement, so it was hard to get a good sense of what the economic hardship was. So, I mean, that stuff we'll take a closer look at. But I think this decision on a case-by-case basis, I don't know if that puts us in jeopardy.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra.
I'm worried about precedent too, or as Mr. Kouts said, creating a template. But I feel that if that precedent was, the danger of that precedent was present, it was set when we made the decision about 502 South Fourth Street. Similar situation, homeowner asking to completely re-side the house with like-for-like material. We tonight asked for difference between those two. Neither the HPC chairman nor Michael could explain to us why that decision was any different than this decision. So this decision is not setting precedent if that decision by the HPC did not set it previously.
Before I recognize Alderman Bruno for a second time, anyone on the council wish to speak or ask a question who has not yet done so? Alderman Cummings.
I want to say, I was just saying between meetings that I've never, I've sat through a few issues where HPC has come up, and the homeowner or building owner has come up, and they're in disagreement, and we have to make the decision. At no point ever in the X number of years that I've sat here have I gone away from that meeting and thought we were blasé about the thought process. I think that we all become very engaged in this. It is seldom a black-and-white issue. There's an awful lot of gray in there. I have voted in the past to uphold, I have voted in the past to overturn. I don't take it lightly. I'm very reluctant to say that it's precedent-setting in my mind. It's absolutely not. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Anyone joining us this evening live? If you're still alive, that is. Is everyone clear with respect to what's required on the vote? Two-thirds in the affirmative is to uphold the decision at the committee of the whole meeting?
I did have my hand up earlier.
Oh, forgive me, Alderman Bruno, I'm sorry. You did, indeed.
Quick response, I was on HPC with the Rittenhouse property. It's a lot of years ago, I didn't go through those minutes, but I can tell you it wasn't nearly, I can't say what mitigating factors were there, I just can't remember, but it certainly didn't have the same import as this discussion, for what it's worth. Mayor, can you go through what an aye vote, nay vote means, please?
An aye vote upholds the decision of the committee of the whole, which was to overrule the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to deny the applicant's request to, ready for this, replace the siding. So in other words, if the vote at the committee of the whole was seven ayes to overrule HPC, an aye vote is required to stay that decision at the committee level. So an aye overrules the Historic Preservation Commission, a nay supports the Historic Preservation Commission's decision. Madam Recording Secretary, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Chair Burkhart?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
You know, these are always the toughest decisions for me, these, but aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Nay.
Seven affirmative votes, three nay votes. The matter is resolved, the Historic Preservation Commission's decision has been overruled. Any new business for the council this evening? A motion to waive the fees was offered by Alderman Rodecky, is that offer still standing? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Marks, all in favor of waiving the fees, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman Swanson makes the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.